You know. We go straight there too.
If I go girlfriend's city of just.
Oh, yeah.
He was.
I don't know what you're talking about.
My wife died.
Yeah.
I don't.
They had to fall out. Couple of years.
But now.
Yeah, we start the road. It's a cross from there. It's really real.
Oh, I did not know that.
Everybody went out there.
Nope, I did not know that. Next in all, uh, the end of the week.
Well, yeah.
If you haven't done it already, please find out.
I'm never even like. I can't remember. Ah. They've got. They're getting their own, but we're really close to that. My home's in my hands, so I have to go back and forth and I get my eggs from them.
Oh, really?
Are you laughing at our small town? No, well, a little bit. She's not gonna hope they hear.
You're right.
It is. Well, there are a small town connection. I have cousins that grow young. And I'm pretty sure that's a big year.
Well, Jeffrey.
Yeah, whatever. I don't know if Ray's probably knows. I mean, it has to be. That's interesting. So there's. I think. Always. Where are you? Dan, I guess something sounds really familiar. My cousin. Richard? See you later. Okay. I, uh, do. And then. The John Stacey family, so it's like, it's kind of a burrow. Maybe also it's.
Over the moon. Well, I can see kids, kids, better. Real top, which is his feeling. Well, let's. All right, I don't know six thirty, so I will call, uh, April seventh, three coming through. Meeting order, please join me. What's it?
To the light of the United States of America and to the repulsive, perverse sin. One nation, American, in the individual, liberty, justice, or all.
Good, welcome everyone, um. Councilor Meyer.
Here.
Councilmember Ling.
Here.
Councilor Matt.
Here.
Councilmember Lippin.
Here.
And Councilmember Rees.
Here.
Uh, Councilmember President, also President is, uh, Police Chief and Intern, City Inspector, Glenn Jarrett, and City Attorney Kim Johnson. All right. I have three approval agenda, there are some changes, we're gonna make, uh, we're gonna move the Historical Society's annual report, uh, to just right after the street project. Uh, they need to get going, and then we're gonna add item nine A, and that is the memo, uh, memo you got from Kirby Oak Playground, plus slides. Any other additions?
I'd like to add one, just, just call it City Council. For the better.
Okay. You can do that. We'll do that at the end.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'd like to have the quote shot.
That's under EVA update. You guys can give your updates then on that. Okay. Do you need emotional proof agenda?
I like emotional proof agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Meyer, second by Councilmember Lippin, do approve the agenda, all pay or say aye?
Aye.
Post? All right, is there anyone, um, who'd like to address the council tonight that's not on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Come up and state your name and where you live.
Uh, good evening, uh, Kirby Grandeau, I'm with, uh, one of the least experienced Anderson Road.
Okay.
Um, I guess this is about parking, kind of blocking mailbox, even stuff like that. Um, for over two years, we've been facing ongoing issues with vehicles parking directly in front of our mailbox, and, uh, pretty much a lot of driveway. Not only obstructs our view when backing all the way down the street, but also creates serious safety concerns for us. You're asking the prosecutor, creating an ordinance to address this. There are times when we go two to three days without receiving our mail due to those parking problem. Um, we've also heard that other residents around town are facing a similar challenge. Um, until you have to deal with it firsthand, it's difficult to fully understand the frustration that we kind of deal with. Because there's no law, you can't really do anything about it right now. We believe that an ordinance would be beneficial. In addition to mail issues, there's safety concerns for, um, backing out on the street. We just now have a fifteen year old with their learner's permit, so, you know, beginning to teach and having vehicles blocked when you're trying to back by the driveway. And then, um, also it's very busy with bike traffic and pedestrian, and that, so. We're just hoping that that could possibly become an ordinance, you know, at least do like a ten or fifteen foot out of driveways or, you know, especially not parked in front of mailboxes. Okay, that's really all I got.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's great. I'll look into it. Anyone else? All right. We'll move on. So for the consent agenda, tonight's consent agenda consists of item A, approval of the bills, item B, approval of the March third, twenty twenty five, City Council meeting minutes, item C, approve the hiring of Oscar Montoro Rosa as paramedic pending successful background check, and item D, approval of legalization for Civil County Haga Association for May tenth, twenty twenty five, for the puzzle fund with razor fur bachelors. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve the consent agenda made by Councilmember Reed, second by Councilmember Ling, all pay or say aye?
Aye.
Post? All right, uh, street project update, Jason?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome, Kurt, Council, I do have, gonna pass these out, this is just kind of the phasing of the project I can just kind of go over, since it's been a bit of a, bit of time since we've chatted about this, and, uh, here now. During the second year of our two thousand and twenty four street utility improvement, and, uh, we already just been out there today, so that, uh, work is started.
Is there an extra one, sir?
I agree, can't.
Well, I have the picture.
Oh, okay.
What's that? When were we supposed to get to that?
You're not supposed to see that. That's for Kirby tomorrow.
Right.
Yeah.
You don't let the council know what you do.
I hope we got more stuff. You're gonna be confused. All right, now that we got that out of the way, we'll go through, uh, um, yeah, the contractor started moving in, we had to wait, uh, all of the week from when they were planning on it going on. Obviously, we had some freezing overnight temperatures, but, uh, they did get, uh, some of the temporary waters thrown out today, and that's some of the, the first that they will be doing, and so we are in, uh, phase three. Um, it's in yellow, uh, it would be West Chandler Street, essentially to the west of the hospital and Seventh Avenue, and then that little stretch of eighth, uh, up to the fairgrounds is where they're currently gonna be working, uh, here in anticipated April through mid-June. Mid-June is more than likely when it'll be fully surfaced, fully done, digging will take about three to four weeks, uh, in this area. So they did mobilize into crews, uh, we held a construction meeting here with the contractor to kind of kick off, uh, this year's project, uh, two weeks ago. And, uh, after that, we did put together, uh, the latest greatest newsletter, and we did mail that to every property owner that was out there, uh, just to kind of kick off the, the year that everybody was indeed noticed. Um, this newsletter is not gonna be mailed out every time, there's a couple of different ways that people can get that, it's gonna be posted here at City Hall, uh, the, uh, social media with the city, and then we also have, people can sign up the emails, get email updates, and then text message updates. All that information is in this newsletter for people that really wanna keep up with the project and what's happening, but, um, we will be doing these newsletters after our construction meetings. Have construction meetings, uh, uh, every other week, uh, here at City Hall with the contractor, talk about the upcoming week's schedules, any changes that have happened, and essentially progress would have been, where we're going for the next, uh, two weeks plus, but they did outline, uh, a schedule, um, we're gonna probably adhere to, um, you know, weather dependence and everything like that, takes us all the way out until, you know, August, the end of August. Completion date for this project, uh, to refresh everybody's, essentially, uh, substantial completion the first of September of this year. Uh, that includes pavement, concrete, curb and gutter, and then the following year would be the wear course for the project that's happening this year. So what they're gonna do on the, on the phases, uh, phase one and two that were completed last year, and we will get the permanent seeding done on that when weather, uh, permits, um, to get some grass to grow within that area, it's not gonna be left, uh, for a full other year, so we just did temporary mulch on that to get through the winter, so, um, I would expect to see that within the, the coming weeks, and I'll give you an update at the next council meeting, if that hasn't happened yet, so. Uh, essentially, uh, we got phase one and phase two done last year, uh, we did not cross Highway five, uh, that was, you know, towards the end of the year. Highway five is that curfew connection for the san- sanitary sewer, excuse me, and the storm sewer. Storm sewer project we've been working on for many years, uh, to get the outlet to High Island Creek to drain this area over by the fairgrounds, where we've had flooding issues for many, many years, and also, um, infiltration into the sanitary sewer, so be a big step to get that across Highway five. Um, we don't have an exact date, you can see on Harrison Pink says June, that's, they're gonna line up all the subs, we have twenty-one days once we start that project to getting it totally, uh, put back. So lots of things have to happen, a lot of digging, the concrete work, the tumors work, so making sure all the subs are lined up together to get that done. They need to provide two weeks of notice prior to that happening, we have talked to MINDOT, let them know that this project is happening this year and not last year, uh, and that permit is still good for that work, so. As we get closer to that, there'll be detours set up and be a lot more information, more than likely, um, information went out to the entire community of what's gonna be happening when that happens, so. Um, what else do I have? Yeah. Yeah, I touched on newsletters and kind of, yeah, so they're gonna be digging, obviously, two crews, sanitary sewer, water main, and storm sewer, uh, within this stretch prior to, uh, bringing the street back up, so. Um, trying to maintain reasonable access to those corner lots the best we can, um, working with the contractor on garbages, uh, mailboxes, I kind of didn't update from them where those are gonna get relocated to, working with the postmaster on that, so, uh, some of those details, uh, you know, to kind of get the year started on a good foot, so. Everything seemed to, to make sense when we had that meeting, and we're all on the same page, so, um, open it up, ten questions you guys have?
Do you know that under Highway five, the water main is, you know, pipe? They had a water main break, that's probably ten years old.
Twenty-five years ago. No pipe broke underneath roads, then they did inflection and board in a new one, turned over, like itself.
Okay.
So you find two water mains, and there one of them in case.
Okay.
I don't know if you knew that or not, 'cause I'm sure it's not on any maps, they didn't write anything down.
Yeah, I don't recall hearing.
But they had to put a twelve inch pipe, and then there's a six inch, eight inch water main inside the pipe.
Okay, okay.
Might be helpful for you.
Yeah.
Start digging. What's this?
Yeah. Well, and if you recall, last year, we did run into some of these contaminated soils, uh, at that intersection. That Petrofund reimbursement, I do have information that should be coming to you at the next meeting, we did get all of that paperwork put together, so. The change order for that and that paperwork to be coming here, we just got that, uh, I was reviewing it today, uh, so we'll get that going. If we find anything, or potentially, when we potentially find something crossing Highway five, we're gonna be more mobile, uh, being able to address that versus the finding the unknown and what's out there, so.
Are they gonna dig Highway five up, or are you gonna bore underneath? Oh, they're gonna dig it up?
Yep. Large storm sewer that's deep.
Okay.
Drilling that in would be very challenging, and so, it, it is digging it up, and so when we're digging that up, we're replacing everything within that, because we're gonna do this one time, in the rest of our lifetime, so.
Do you know what hand jigs with the, the, um, subface? Whether they bring back in, re-crushed the tumors reclaimed on site and crushed in Arlington, or whether they bring in classifieds, same unit price?
It's the same unit price, it's up to them, as long as they're meeting the specification and the gradation, they're allowed to grind and bring in and recycle that material, which is actually a good thing, right? I mean, aggregates are, are a finite resource, so we're, we're using that, I believe that's what they indeed do, is.
Do you know if the price is comparable, that if they would bring, completely bring, uh, pardon me?
We just allow that in the, in the, in the bidding environment, so that's really up to them, uh, and I'd have to look at the price, but, you know, they did that accordingly, so if they're gonna be able to reuse some of that, they don't have to bring in so much new, that reflects in the price itself, so if they are reusing it, I mean, that is valuable material that they're reusing, right? So, you know, if they were to, if we were not allowing that, they would sell that elsewhere, right?
It's got a good competitive, so probably almost.
Almost better.
So the only reason I ask is, there was controversy last year with them setting up their crushing equipment on the other main street, the apartments, and some of the residents were told, uh, down the end of Main Street.
Okay.
They were, oh, well, the reclaimed material down there, and setting up the crusher and running some odd albers and stuff.
Okay.
And they were told that the reason it was, was because the city was getting a special price on material, and I said, I guarantee that the city's not getting breaking into the tree.
It's part of the bid, yeah, I'm not sure, but, yeah, we didn't work it, we didn't work any other kind of deals, it was all based on, uh, the bid price and stuff. They should have been doing those down at Kirby Shop down there.
Yeah, yeah, the other main street down there, yeah.
Okay, down there, yeah.
That's, uh, that's my one, and it's not, it's not, uh, a primitive for, for crushing equipment.
Okay.
And I'm aware of the city didn't issue a permit or anything, and residents were kind of upset.
Yeah, well, I think we, the dust was down, so we'll, we'll address that again this year, so.
Another question I have, it's last year when they were in realizing, they come in with one crew, they had one, two, three, four, five blocks tore up for almost anywhere between ten and twelve weeks before people could access their driveways, and one of their biggest delays was, was their dirt crew, and I realized, you, you gotta dig up the whole thing once it's torn, you gotta dig up the whole thing once it's sanitary, and you gotta dig the whole thing up in the meantime, and I realized that takes time, but for people not to have access to their driveways for, for ten, twelve weeks, when a lot of those times, that road's set empty, no subways being hauled back in, if they're gonna have two dirt crews in place, are they gonna have a subplace, a road re building crew coming behind them not that we tear that stuff up and leave it for ten weeks again?
Really noted, yep, I'll, I'll bring that up at the next, uh, to, you know, make sure that we're kind to the residents and trying to get them back in there and not leaving it to, uh, sitting there, I don't just call up the, the, whether, doesn't matter where we've been.
I didn't, I think they were just, it was towards the end of the year, and they were short on crews, they basically didn't bring a road re building crew back in. Yeah, and roads just sat there, and some of these roads, like from the mayor's house, and, and then the first block that was in seven to eight, it's not three hundred fifty millimeter block, it's only a five, six hundred foot block, and I don't think people are gonna high shake walking through their driveway for.
Sure, sure, yep, I got you, yeah. Yep, so there's two crews gonna be working in this stretch to start, then they're gonna jump to, uh, Brooks, in, in orange there with the two crews still happening. After the orange, it'll probably go down to one crew, um, because those, getting rid of those, those longer, the bigger.
Utility streets too.
Yep, yep, the others have less utilities, correct.
And the last one, has, has the contractor or anybody started putting a plan together on how they're gonna service the hospital?
Yeah, it's, it's definitely in the discussion, so we've got some of that built plans, we're gonna have an onsite meeting here as soon as, uh, the crews were in town before we, we get there. So that's out of ways, but however, we wanna make sure that we have a plan.
Can't use like two inches, that's gotta be four inches.
No, we're talking about six inch, two inch.
Yep.
Yep, exactly, so. For this franchise system, so it is definitely a topic, and an onsite meeting with the hospital folks, uh, uh, lead, and then the contractor.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Jason? All right. Thank you.
All right, we'll, uh, we'll talk to you guys, yeah, next, next month, I plan on giving, uh, an update, and again, anything comes up, reach out to me. Um, I have the representatives out there, but you guys, it's, it's all on me.
First May construction meeting's tomorrow, anybody can come?
Yep, yep.
Yep, and it's every other week.
Every other week, yep, but it's at two o'clock, as we have.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Good evening. All right. We'll move on, let's do the Historical Society annual report, white.
You have, in your packet, you do have copy and report, and that's well on any fire with, other than letting everybody know that last year's exhibit is the hundred and fortieth anniversary of the fire department and of the Arlington enterprise, and this year, the main exhibit's gonna be on the fiftieth anniversary of the Arlington Public Library, you're gonna have to come to find out what date, because I'm not gonna tell you the date, so, I want you to come as a newbie, I, I really do. All of the material that, uh, is basically is in there, the, the last two pages that are, are financial part of it, but the thing, main thing I wanted to do tonight was on page four, paragraph seven, it's been our goal ever since, uh, we've been organized, to add pictures up here, and tonight, we're gonna present to the City of Arlington, one more mayor, it took us a while to get it, and the reason for that is the actual picture is owned by the Sibley County Historical Society, and we have to jump through some hoops to make it legal that we can give it to you. Uh, first of all, we had to get their permission to copy it, and then their permission, uh, are, we needed their permission that we can put it on display here, so. We got both of those, and so now this is going to be added to the all of theirs, this is being given to the City of Arlington tonight, because so somebody in the city office is gonna have to get another. So. I have really nothing more that, that I want to say tonight, if there are any questions, I'd love to field them, uh, and we open the, uh, third of May, we're gonna celebrate twenty-five years of existence on the third of May. Uh, we may reach the twenty-five years on the sixth of March, but, uh, we're going to open, nothing was going on, the museum is a mess because we're putting in new stuff all, all around. On the, on the third of May, we're gonna have cake and ice cream and a little bit of celebration. I'll take any questions you have.
You're still having people, I see, committee, a group.
And also, and here are any of the teachers that are interested, uh, we've got a couple of teachers that do come, bring their kids. I love having the kids, because all of a sudden, eyes light up, they didn't know about something, it's really fun, it's really fun to see them get excited about.
All right. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, buddy. Thanks, boys.
All right, uh, I'm gonna move on to item two now, that, uh, is the Ritu, uh, Ritu seriously medical center update, and Sarah and Jim.
Good evening. Um, we start with quick intros, um, Ben Nielsen, chief operating officer at Ritu, um, at Ritu for fifteen years, and, um, laid, laid onto the Ritu Sibley Board, um, so as part of the conversation with Jim during the affiliation, let me show music. So been working with Arlington for most of my fifteen years at Ritu.
And Jim Croft, I recently selected, uh, chairperson for JU, Sibley Board, and member for three and a half years.
And Sarah Earl, vice president at Ritu, I've been there for seventeen years, um, overseeing our support departments, and then with political responsibility as the administrator for both Arlington and Stewart.
So I'm gonna try to be brief, um, and get cool to the point, but if you guys have questions and want me to get more detailed, please, um, ask questions. But passing that around, and once we talk about some of our language within our affiliation here, which is really why we're here tonight, uh, I think it'd be helpful for just to have that reference. So primarily, we're talking about the Henderson Clinic, and Henderson Clinic has been part of, um, Sibley Medical Center, and now Ritu Sibley Medical Center for a number of years. Um, if you're not familiar with the clinic in Henderson, it's a small clinic downtown, uh, two exam rooms, it's very, um, quaint, it's probably one of my favorite clinics, just the way how it's the, the door, that just, anyways, it's a, a great little clinic in downtown Henderson, um, it doesn't have x-rays, so there's things that make it difficult for the clinic there. Historically, we've always been open five days a week, Katie Phillips has been a longstanding provider in the Henderson Clinic, um, during COVID, we had it closed for about a year, and I think a part of that was, you know, again, given the size, it was hard to even make sure we had six week separation, and all that stuff that we were dealing with at that time. Um, but probably for the last three years, we've had the clinic reopen, and Katie's been there two days a week, um, per week, so. Why we're kind of talking about Henderson is that Katie communicated with us really towards the end of last year that she's hoping to retire later this summer, um, and wanted to just talk about what the timeline looks like, what does that mean for Henderson Clinic, Katie also covers Winter Clinic, so she is retiring at the end of August, um, and we debated what do we do with that retirement, um, you know, we really looked at some of the data that relates to Henderson, um, we actually see more patients in our Belt Plain Clinic that live in Henderson than we do in Henderson Clinic, and part of that is Belt Plain has an urgent girlfriend seven days a week, so it's not a great apple to apple comparison, but, um, I think we got our Belt Plain Clinic open seven years now, which is obviously the north of Henderson, and try to three or four years ago, we opened a primary care clinic in the sewer, side door hospital, and may have been vacated that property on our campus a year and a half ago, so, you know, both of those are great for those communities, but it may be a bit of a detriment to Henderson, because now we have three clinics in not a large area in Illinois, um, so ultimately, internally within Ritu, we're like, we think it probably makes the most sense to close Henderson Clinic, uh, and continue to focus our energy on our remaining clinics around Henderson. Um, had meetings with the Ritu Sibley Board members, uh, medical, Ritu Sibley Boards, a, a few different meetings, the first meeting, we invited Katie Phillips there to just kind of speak to the needs of the community, what those patients would need, um, also invited some of our physician leadership just to, you know, perspective of the challenges of managing clinics, um, and the smaller they are, the more challenges they end up facing, um, so ultimately, had two different meetings, and the second meeting, we did move to a vote in the, the board's support moving forward with closing Henderson Clinic, and, you know, they supported understanding the bigger situation, but yet they also struggled with that decision, because of the impact for the community of Henderson. Um, and then maybe just quickly on timeline, with Katie retiring in August, um, we're, hard to communicate with one of our providers in Belt Plain and a provider in the sewer, to go work in Henderson for a couple of months with Katie, and a couple of months after Katie, to allow the patients to have somewhat of a transition, but then would, um, like to ultimately close it in November of this year, and then those providers can go back to their own clinics. So, any questions before we kind of talk about the affiliation, affiliation agreement and kind of my work here at Henderson Clinic?
I think that being, being in the meetings, I'm not a worrying member, I'm just constantly, uh, I think it's gentlemen, everybody can attest, but the one meeting, this wasn't even the only subject on the meeting, I think we still went on for hour and a half, and there was a special meeting besides work, it was another hour or so, wasn't it? It wasn't a short, easy discussion.
Do you wanna speak to the affiliation?
Um, so you're likely sitting in your seat wondering why in the world, uh, we're addressing Arlington City Council, talking about Henderson. When the affiliation agreement between then Sibley Medical Center and this Sibley Old Medical Center by the city of Arlington and Ridgeview Medical Center was reached in twenty fourteen, there were three different parties that signed that agreement. The city of course, Ridgeview Sibley, Ridgeview Medical Center as well as Sibley Medical Center Board of Directors, and both three parties have delineated duties and framework in that affiliation agreement. And what you see on the handout today are two excerpts from that affiliation agreement. The one defining what core services for Sibley Medical Center, the former Sibley Medical Center and now Ridgeview Sibley Medical Center are over and expected to be. The second excerpt is, uh, qualifies that Ridgeview must retain those core services unless it's approved by the city of Arlington. So you can see listed that the Henderson Clinic is the, is part of the core services. So, I as a member of the Board of Directors for Ridgeview Sibley, I am carrying a recommendation from that group to the city council for basically approval on closing Henderson Clinic.
I don't know if it might know the makeup of the board, but there's four members from Arlington community, one from Gator, one from Winthrop, several, um, township residents, so it's not a, it's not a small board. Yeah. And you have one from Henderson, yes.
Questions? Thoughts? Basically, it's our decision that we go by their recommendation, we need approval, a motion to approve the closure of Henderson.
I'll make a motion to approve the Henderson Clinic, but the new proposal is also the change in the core services.
Alright, motion by council member Ling, second by council member Lifford to approve the closure of Henderson Clinic, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stand sign, motion passed. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
No, I'm not, I wasn't crazy about telling them, I said what they can't have within our agreement. Alright, um, sound great, discussion of ordinance eleven dash oh three, Nicole?
Hello, I'm Nicole Bird, I live on two oh three, South Avenue Southwest, here in Arlington. I'm here tonight to address the municipal ordinance eleven point three about wild or predator animals, specifically about poisonous or constricting snakes. I was unaware of this ordinance until March seventeenth, when an anonymous phone call was made to the Arlington police about my snakes. I currently own three ball pythons, and due to the fact that they constrict their food, I was informed that I am no longer allowed to keep them. Ball pythons are a very docile and friendly snake, in fact, they are the number two most owned reptiles, right behind bearded dragon. My full grown female Aspin is at her max length of three feet and weighs about about three pounds. Houdini, my full grown male, is slightly smaller, at around two and a half feet and under three pounds. Then there's Penelope, my one and a half year old juvenile female, who is just under two feet. All of my snakes are captive bred and actually came from a breeder in Guangzhou, so I'm a K ball python, if anybody has heard of them. Um, they're all housed separately in appropriate sized enclosures. My two adults eat frozen, small to medium rats once a month, and my juvenile eats large frozen mice twice a month. Besides being beloved members of the family to my boys and I, they are also used for educational purposes. When I worked at the Sibley East Middle School High School as a pair last year, I brought in Aspin, along with my bearded dragon, to the seventh grade science classes when we were learning about reptiles. My son, who is currently in tenth grade, brought them into his English class last year as part of a report he was presenting in class. Of course, we were granted permission from the principal and the teachers before bringing them in. Aspin and I were even invited to talk to a preschool class at one of the Laconia Elementary Schools when they were learning about different pets. At my turn place of employment, Ozon Pet Essentials in Laconia, Aspin and I also participated in their Halloween costume contest in February. The same for the store with Harry Potter, and the kids enjoyed getting to have a picture taken with me, Lord Voldemort, so imagine me in a bald cap, um, and of course, Aspin. Now, while I believe some snakes in the constrictor family should not be kept as pets, for example, the reticulated python and the grinning anaconda, since they can grow over thirteen feet in length, and ours is docile as ball pythons. I respectfully asked that the ball pythons be removed from the concubinitate list. Aspin, Houdini, and Penelope are very much part of mine and my kids' family, and we would be devastated if we would have to rehome them. Any questions about my snakes? I left them at home, just in case anybody wasn't comfortable with them, so.
I didn't see that ordinance put in here. I expected it to be in the packet, I read it, I read through it a number of times this morning, and it's really unclear to me, it says that it's, that they are allowed. No. The wording to me is not really, I'd like to see and show you where.
That's right.
There it is, yeah.
Any questions about snakes?
First, first paragraph, um, entails everything in, in the paragraph, or first line, I should say. "The wild animal of all time, taken from its natural habitat, shall be kept or harbored in the city limits," these may include.
But it also says, after it says panther, panther wings, cougars, large cat family, eagles, hawks, falcons, and other large species, then it says alligators, crocodiles, iguanas, poisonous constrictor snakes shall be allowed to be kept or held within the city limits. Shall be allowed.
No.
Shall be allowed.
That's no part, no, no, that's no part of the first sentence, no predatory animal, all the way to, and including this, shall be allowed. That's one long sentence.
Yeah, look at the front of it, there's no.
Yeah. Yeah. So, that's what the ordinance states, I'll, I'll leave it to the attorney and chief to.
Let me ask this, not if it, if it even matters, uh, since there was a report, but did somebody just know that it was there, or did it get loose, like one of the snakes?
Somebody knew I had snakes, they have always been in my control. They only come out of their enclosures when I take them out, even my kids don't take them out.
That was the only reason why we were called.
Yeah. I can guarantee I'm not the only one in the city of Arlington with a ball python. Green Isle has the very exact same ordinance word for word, and I know three people with ball pythons in Green Isle.
So.
I think it, it comes down to the preference of what the city, I guess they want to do on it, um, so we are in the process of redoing all our ordinances right now. Um, so a lot of this stuff will be addressed here, um, I know when Jeff, I think we're gonna start tackling it when Jeff comes back, and then we're gonna start piling through all this stuff. I, I, I wouldn't recommend, you know, we, you know, change this tonight, or attempt to start changing it tonight, I think we're in the process of changing everything. Um, so I think it boils down to what sort of restrictions you want to put in place when we do these updated codes. And I certainly think, there's certainly cities out there that allow these sort of animals.
For example, Guangzhou, because we actually, a, a breeder is out in Guangzhou, and a lot of them, a few different codes, I've been looking around, I would say, anything over a certain foot length, not allowed in the city. Which makes sense for those larger ones, like the birdies, pythons particularly, the ones that get huge and could pose a threat, potential threat. But ball pythons are basically dirt, you scare them and they roll up into balls. I, I'm more scared of starder snakes than any kind of ball python.
So, how do we allow her to not have them taken away until ordinance gets changed?
With a waiver?
Well, there's not really a, a operation in, in place where we can just waive, there's no waiver that the council can do that they hate and continue breaking the law. Not really how it works, the council can't approve to break the law. So until the ordinance gets modified, or I guess, I think we are going to modify it, but there's not much we can do in that aspect.
She's on an extension, that I, I gave her an extension until a meeting.
Yeah. I was given two weeks.
Which was reasonable, so. I mean, by ordinance, we're typically give, given ten business days to deal with the matter. And she came, wanted to address that review, and allowing you in, you make the rule, uh, that you're her side of it.
So then that's really, the possibility of amendments to the ordinance?
Yeah, we, we can certainly amend this or fashion it however we want, whatever we think is appropriate here. Now. You know, i- is it, yeah, I, I guess I'd leave it to you guys to make the determination if it worth it to, you know, redraw this ordinance when we're already in the process of redrawing the whole color, which includes this. Uh, just to go through this ordinance amendment, just to redo it again in a month or two later.
Just so the, like, pushes the ordinance.
Do we do an extension until we get the ordinance fixed, or we decide we have to do, we go through the government, I don't know what's the right thing to do there.
And I, I certainly think that Glenn could use some common sense here and his judgment, I, I just don't think that the, the council has that, is an authority to say, yeah, you can just continue breaking out ordinance.
I don't trust Glenn. No, I do, on record, yeah, thanks for that. The whole burden is so I better.
Consider targeting or the exact opposite, making, making an exemption, you know, constrictor snakes, she already said they're, they're just talking about pythons, we're not talking to anacondas and so on. We hope to put a, put an exemption. Well, that's why we have to look at the whole ordinance, because we're not just looking at the snake part of it, I think there was lizards on there too, there was, so it's a long, yeah, this is, this is a long discussion of what council is going to allow and city limits were, you know, 'cause, you know, I don't know what. Yeah, I mean, I look to it too, and yeah, I mean, honestly, some of it is pretty cut and dry, but then there's a few, adonis, you know, how, there's so many different kinds of styles, as bright as that, how are we gonna, because now you're, you're, you're looking at each di- different species or whatever that they're going on, so. So we, we just really want to be prepared that if the. When we, well, when we start looking at all of our ordinances, we really need to start, you know, look at and see what we're gonna wanna do. I mean, the city to this one, that. Yeah, this complaint, if you consider complaints. Complaint, or the complaint comes forward and says, listen, you guys have heard, but you're not doing anything about, so we need to be. That would be, I guess it's up to the chief if he'd like to give her another extension.
We, we can give her another extension because the rehoming process of snakes is very difficult as well.
I used to see a lot of them on Facebook Marketplace.
Yeah, I would agree with you, there's more than probably just two of them.
Yeah.
My son was listening to the guy before he was married, like Adam.
And they are kind of neat, and I, you know.
They are super adorable.
Just a. Just a quick story.
Why they're at home, they're just lying there.
Have you ever had one of those, where you get one?
Houdini got out once, with a noose on, yes, my son forgot to put the lid lock back on. We found him the next morning in my baby's fish tank that was taking a soak. So, and then soapy went fast, but yeah, they are still moving, they're scared of my cats. That's why they only come out one on with them, so that way nobody gets hurt, I'm more worried of my cats hurting them than them hurting my cats. Because they, queen, he is so picky, like, you give him the wrong colored rat, and he won't eat, until you give him the right colored rat. So, he's a little food machine.
That's what I had, once I had a friend, and she, she weighed about eighty-five pounds, and she had forty-five pounds snake. And she would carry it to work, wrap it around her neck, and she'd let us go with it once, once a month, to watch her feed it, and that's, I would only ate live guinea pigs. You know, it was, you know, it was just taking hours to digest it, it was kind of fun to watch.
And whether, whether we were codifying our ordinances or not, it still takes time to redo an ordinance, so. But then it would take, you know, some discussion, so. We will add that to the list, I believe, and, and obviously.
Yeah.
You can allow it, you're in person, you're still, it's defined by the council, just determine whether or not they're gonna be allowed.
And if you guys, if you're doing these ordinances and need any questions about reptiles, let me know, I am the reptile person, I adore, because besides my snakes, I do have urospits, I have leopard geckos. So, unfortunately, my bearded dragon passed away on Thursday, so, but. I know about reptiles, if you have any questions about any of those on your list.
Alright.
Alright. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. So move on, item, uh, four, approve VFD bid, Newsmire Electric Sludge Floor, you got it in your packet, uh, bid is for, uh, six thousand five hundred and forty dollars.
I'll make a motion that we approve the VFD, uh, bid for the sludge floor for six thousand five hundred and forty dollars.
Second? Jeff? Okay. Motion by council member Meyer, second by council member Nass, to approve the VFD bid from Newsmire Electric Sludge Floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, item five, approved recommendation from planning and zoning commission for resume, rezoning of I one district to I two district. Dave, you wanna shed some light on that one?
Yeah, there was, uh, lots of discussion on it, um, two residents that didn't want us to rezon it, uh, I'm sorry, but the proper way is to rezon it, it's just the right way to do. And we didn't get much argument on that, they just didn't like noise, didn't like dust. I'm sorry, there was dust everywhere, there was noise everywhere. So, the recommendation was unanimous to make the recommendation for us to approve it.
We just need to, did you guys, are you two wanna wait till discussion?
No.
Oh, then we can discuss. Did you guys get the impression that, um, uh, are you seeing impression there that if it's rezoned from I one to I two, that, uh, whatever occupations are taking place there right now are just automatically approved legal, or there would still be potential that there may be CUPs?
They're still gonna need their conditional use termets, the only big change in it is the setback, I, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but I think the setback was fifty feet, and now it's gonna go to twenty-five. Everybody's within the setback. Everybody's within the setback anyway.
Yeah, I, I've spent time talking to the chief from, from his points of view, called in there with complaints and I've spoken with our planning and zoning consultant Michael Muntz and what's his view. I, I've spoken with, with Paul Pepper and I've spoken with Brad Creager. Not, not to get every, any one certain story, but to get everybody's impression on what's been going on here and, I don't think that changing this from I one to I two is a problem. You know, I think it, um, Hudson should have been in I two.
Right, that's the thing. A lot of those businesses in there are technically I two business.
And I think even our electrical substate should be in I two.
Yes. So it just cleans up that district. Yes, they still need to get the, uh, conditional use permit and, you know, be good neighbors and work within business, you know, normal business hours.
Well, and one thing was, was me who was, was Paul from Peachtree Perry, you know, he's looking at putting up the new building, probably more expensive than the building he was there in. And, uh, there are some issues. This is the time to work with him, which I talked to him about, the placement of the building because the building can be used as a solid area type, you know, for, you know, some of the problem areas. So.
Did we, did we hold the, the public hearing on that?
Yes.
Yeah, fine with that.
That was, uh, the last planning and zoning meeting.
Yeah, very last one, yeah.
Right.
And that's when we got people concerned and talked.
Yeah, we did. There were a lot of people at that. So, then I just did a motion to approve the recommendation.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation, um, of, uh, for the recommendation planning zoning to rezone, uh, I one into I two district.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Matt, second by Councilmember Meyer to approve the recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission for rezoning of I one district to I two district. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next on the agenda, uh, resolution twenty dash twenty twenty five. Um, so re- re- resolution ratified, mayor appointments and committees, there's still, there's still planning and zoning commission with Ricky Schmidt as the new member. And I think we're still need, what we need yet. We're still looking for one person for public safety, but I think then all our committees will be full. So, any recommendations for public safety? Adam applied, so. So right now, it's eight twenty, introduce the resolution.
I introduce resolution twenty dash twenty twenty five.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, resolution twenty, twenty dash twenty twenty five, um, introduced by Councilmember Liffen, second by Councilmember Reitz, and this is a res- resolution ratified, mayor appointments and committees. I will call, Councilmember Matt?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Ling?
Yes.
Councilmember Liffen?
Yes.
And Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Five in favor, none against, the resolution passes. All right. Next on the list is resolution twenty one dash twenty twenty five, to the resolution accepting a donation, um, a donation of five thousand from the Arlington Chamber of Commerce to be used for twenty twenty four, uh, Christmas lights on Main Street.
Hall entry is resolution twenty twenty five, twenty one dash twenty twenty five for the resolution accepting a donation for five thousand dollars for the lights.
Next second. All right, resolution twenty one dash twenty twenty five introduced by Councilmember Ling, second by Councilmember Liffen, to the resolution accepting a donation of five thousand dollars from the Arlington Chamber of Commerce to be used for the twenty twenty four, uh, replacement Christmas lights. And we'll, we'll call again. Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Liffen?
Yes.
Councilmember Matt?
Yes.
And Councilmember Ling?
Yes.
Five in favor, none against, the resolution passes. All right. So, item eight, I guess this is between, set the date for, um, first of all, committee is for a PTO discussion. You two have a, what's your schedules look like that you can, that we could set up a meeting at that time? What works best for you?
Anything after five.
Anything after five? Okay, any day of the week works? Do we wanna do it next week? How's your schedule look? Next week is fine, okay? Tuesday? Tuesday, buddy, five thirty?
Yeah.
Fifteen? All right. Just to, just to go over that policy, two things. All right, item nine, EMS discussion, EMS week discussion.
We should have that one.
Oh, we can see this. It's all looking on for it. By the way, nice to see a week getting some, somewhere. I come from, it's like a year to get an eye roll, like. Good job.
Alright, so, good evening. We have EMS week coming up this next month. And Mark and I have been kind of going back and forth as a pretty bad tennis match on what we want to do to kind of incorporate community involvement and get the ambulance out and about.
Just for a, this is pretty cool because not a lot of small towns get really into EMS week. You kind of pride yourself on it. I think that's your basis.
Yeah, so it's, it's kind of something fun that we like to do, you know, and incorporate the community, get them involved in that stuff too. Uh, so this year for EMS week, it's week here for everyone. That's kind of our theme, so it's to kind of go from, you know, open everywhere in between. Um, so typically they have it set up where there are certain days of the week that'll focus on health, wellness and resilience, education, safety. Um, there's a EMS for children's day, uh, CPR, kind of stop the bleed kind of situation and, uh, recognition. So where we do recognize our current EMS personnel and then also EMS for number and say, that was one thing that they had added on to it. And so I think this year, um, we were kind of discussing, kind of going back to how, what we were doing before. Uh, essentially reaching out to certain days, um, going to the different schools and offering us educational materials for our kids. Having the kids have an opportunity to go through the ambulance, a fire truck, a supply car, things like that, really incorporate that public safety presence amongst the kids. Um, and then also utilize our social media as well. So, um, we have a Facebook page. We do put educational materials on there, we're just kind of compiling a, a list of things that we'd like to do for, you know, the city and community. I just wanted to give you kind of an update on that, that is coming next week, uh, next month. We're kind of excited about it. It's our week of corrupt. It's, it's just, it's fun to get the community involved in things like that, so. I don't know, is there anything that you, oh, for your first responders award, so I did notify, um, Arlington Fire and Greenhouse Fire to, um, make the recommendations or the nominations for our first responders of the year because again, EMS sits in all public safety sectors, so we always want to recognize those. And then we also have our, um, own internal, uh, providers of the year award too that we give to someone who's nominated for their excellent duty to, to care and act and help other community affected families. Did I miss anything?
Um, no, you know, not really. I mean, our Sunday for mental health, wellness and resilience day, we do a lot of, uh, posting on the social media for videos or something. We did a flyer, not sure if you're on, 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 right?
Yeah.
Informational flyer for senior citizens and such. We also go fight safety and things like that, so. We kind of make it up there every year, some of the.
Yeah, hoping to do like life pressure, pressure checks up here at the city hall again?
Absolutely.
That week, so there's community members out there.
Uh, and, yeah, the, uh, child.
Child, that's. You have technicians who you can get them on here too, to make sure that people know how to effectively use their self safety vehicles and make sure that they're installing them properly. Kind of important. Yeah, we just wanted to kind of speak on that. We, we were thinking we were gonna go down the big, big to do and, and I decided, I'm like, no, we're trying to keep it simple. Because we really wanna focus on Arlington, I know too.
Yeah.
That's, that's a really, really awesome event for public safety and getting the community out and about, so. We really want to, uh, focus a lot of our energy on that. Anything else? Did you wanna, did you wanna ask them about the, um, breast cancer thing, you know?
I did. A member of our team, actually a few of them had approached, uh, and wanted to be able to buy their own shirts that look exactly like our uniform shirts. They want to do it on their own. They just want to add a breast cancer awareness ribbon. On the front, maybe a yarn or something. We just wanted to make sure it was safe to be placed in the resolution.
Yeah.
So.
Essentially it won't change. And I, he was kind of, oh, I should say, they were trying to do that without, you know, I have.
Yeah.
We need to bring this to the council and.
So we'll put it on the okay committee?
If it sounded inappropriate, then, you know, we can't change anything because it, it is hard and I really, really like the, our, this is supposed to be our, our local and stuff on our uniform shirt, but if this app wanted to purchase their own, that's why I, Mark, I said this is something to bring to council. Yeah, we get a real couple on.
So that's all I got. Anything for us? No, okay.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
This is item nine, this is the, um, playground, so we have a slide, Kirby contacted me today about this, asking for direct two. And with the weather getting nice, kind of said, like I told him, that we got the quotes and put a memo together for council to, um, go over. We can definitely get it on the schedule, so. Basically, you see the picture of a slide that looks like she wants to get, price of it. It's, uh, fifty nine, or five thousand nine hundred and eighty one. Got a chance to read the memo. Playground equipment's getting old. We had to put some money at it. We did replace the house slide. That was really expensive at the time. So yeah, well, there's gonna be some discussion we'll have to have here coming in the next coming years of how we're gonna replace that, but it's coming up on its end of its lifetime. What we're gonna do, it's gonna be sooner or later. And then it might be, we want to do a bunch of talks and see what we're gonna go with.
He said in the analysis here, cost analysis, he said it was something that's in the park budget.
We've been, we have, but we should be, have been putting away money for it already. Um, however, it was, I think it's spanned out till, till for five more years, you know, to, so for something that we gotta move up, that discussion we'll have to have when we go over the budgets. I did have a phone call with Kirby two today and he said that, um, this model of slide will be upgradable. When you guys upgrade the whole, uh, playground, it will be able to be attached to the I two again. That was the one thing I suggested to him, yeah, which he, that way it doesn't hurt so much. You know, we can reuse the stuff, reuse what we can, so.
Yeah, if it's cracked and it's got sharp edges.
Yeah.
That's not good for our kids.
I would, I would make a motion that we approve Kirby to, uh, replace the slide with a quarter price of five thousand nine hundred and eighty one dollars.
Okay, I'll second. All right, motion by Councilmember Reitz, second by Councilmember Meyer to replace the slide, you know, the cost of five thousand nine hundred and eighty one dollars. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, EDA update. Jeff, you wanna kind of give an update of what's going on?
Sure, um, we have, uh, a quote shop that's interested in purchasing the land and putting up a building. I think we had this discussion and we've got state and municipal. Um, so we found out that, um, EDA does not own the land. The city owns that piece of property. So, everything has to be, I mean, we had our meeting and we voted to turn everything over to the city of Arlington, this group right here to keep the ball rolling for these, for this business so we can get it going. Um, um, we were, we, EDA approached KI, and we ran up a purchase agreement. Um, it was like too much back and forth. This is gonna be the quickest way to do it if we go and, and ask the council and move forward with it, and, and council says the, the EDA board. Any, any thoughts on that?
Well, I, I, I think one thing we gotta keep in mind here, um, so, you know, last, there was, um, back and forth here. Um, and we were trying to determine whether or not who had owned the site, whether it was the EDA, whether it was the city. Um, if it is the city that owned it, then the city's ability to enter into these sorts of agreements and development agreements and incentives of the nature that so far has been asking for is pretty limited. Um, so we would likely have to transfer the property to the EDA. The whole purpose of the EDA, they have special laws and things in place that allows them to do these incentives. Um, so the debt likely, where the first step for the city to transfer back to the EDA, the EDA has got to go through these steps to do it. And then with that, a lot of these incentives that I understand that so far are filthy.
Filthy, filthy.
It, it, it would likely then need also city approval because I believe that they're asking for some tax incentives. Um, as well as, um, utility hookups, that sort of thing, which is gonna cost the city money. And I don't know if the EDA has the capability to take that stuff on. So in many ways, the city's gonna have to back this up.
Okay, and that's saying, that's where we're at, is that, if, you know, EDA has a meeting, we, we want this to happen and then have to go before the city and the city has to approve it and then has to go back to the EDA and then has to go back to the city. And we keep doing this.
Right.
And, and you, so it's going like this forever and nothing's getting done and these people wanna start building.
Right, but we also need to pump the brakes on it as well to make sure that the deal that we put in place is beneficial for both parties. Otherwise, we end up with another half property. I'm just saying, we need to be, do, do our due diligence on, on, on this property and what they're bringing in so that we are all.
I understand that, but this is, this was brought, this was brought to the city six months ago that, that, about getting going on it. And nothing's been done. And so we have to figure out how we can get this moving and do it and get all the paperwork in place. And, and not spend till next November getting, getting it in place. We, we need to figure out how to step this process up instead of just putting it back and forth and to three different routes, to, to KI, to the EDA, to the city council. So we need to, we, we need to figure out how to move forward on this instead of being stagnant.
Yeah.
So.
I'll make a motion that we, the council, turn it over to the EDA to handle it, because they've been handling it. Right. They need a parcel number.
And it, and this is gonna be a transfer property, we're likely gonna wanna do a resolution on it. So I, I can certainly put together a resolution, obviously that can happen tonight.
We could, if you put it together, we could run a, have a quick meet, quick special meeting and run it through so that the EDA can continue because obviously, we can't give what they want on our, on, you know, the EDA has to be the one to negotiate this.
Right.
Yeah, you gotta look at the entire package. Yeah, you gotta look at the entire package.
Yeah.
We're talking a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars for the utility on a one-time basis. That's probably about a fifteen to eighteen percent tax increase on that one. If you do it over ten years, it's probably a percent and a half to two percent tax, tax increase over ten years. So, you need to look at it, the package and see who's gonna pay for the utilities. Um, we understand how tax income financing works. The city still recovers the tax value of the properties that sit. Anything after that on improvements goes back to the, to the residents. So, there's not gonna be a net tax increase to the city for whatever the term of the, of the tip is, ten, fifteen, twenty years. So, you know.
Probably have to send it to the accountant, say, determine what the tax incentive, what the tip is gonna be.
Yeah.
So, there's a, quite a few, if there's, if we're truly gonna go down the, the tip route, the development agreement route, the city getting involved, putting in the utilities, then there's a lot of wheels that are gonna be rolling here and there's gonna be a lot of moving parts that we gotta, you know, align. So, this, this isn't gonna be something that we can just snap our fingers and get done next month or even, I guess, in two months. There's, there's, there's a lot of moving parts on that.
Well, I, I would agree with Dave. I'm assuming we all, the first step is to get the property into, from these hands where they can, they start negotiating the package.
Should we give them the authority to negotiate or does it have to be transferred directly to them?
Yeah, I, I certainly think that we can give the authority to the, the E D A. Um, now, it's, transferring the property to the E D A, that should be fairly simple. If that's something that everybody wants to do, we can just put together a quick claim deed, we'll do a resolution and E D A should do a resolution on their side to accept it. And I don't think that that's gonna be a major hurdle here. It's just all the.
So, how long will that take?
We should be able to accomplish that, putting together a quick claim deed, that, that, you know, that, that shouldn't be done.
Okay, then, so from there, then we have to have a meeting to transfer it over, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and that can be done in a special meeting?
Yeah.
We don't have a way to mark. No, it can be done in a special meeting. You get a couple of Jess or Glenn Owen, call a meeting.
Call a meeting.
Next E D A is the twenty-first.
Then maybe the other things you can have, you know, you get the last meeting, there you stood and you're gonna kind of work the book, think on it, get an updated price on that utility.
They, they figure it's gonna be right. It, it didn't have ballpark range, so.
So, we know what that component of this package is. So, you got the, whatever the purchase price of the land and the tax income financing and the utility package. So, they'll all three into one package and decide what's gonna be given. Don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm not against, as housing, I'm not against business, but there has to be a return to the city. And the return to the city can't be a fifteen to eighteen percent tax increase to the residents to cover utility extension. And say we're doing it for taxes and then we don't recover taxes for fifteen, eighteen years. And then whatever the price of land would be, that's what I'm talking about, the entire package. It's much different than the wage benefit package. I can pay him fifty bucks an hour, but then I'm probably not gonna give him the thirty percent wage package on top of it. You gotta look at the whole, the whole thing.
Okay. So, move forward, if you wanna get the resolution set up and figure out. But at least that'll give them the authority to start looking at, start looking, keep negotiating.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? I know it's covered in the ball for your.
It has been.
Okay.
So, can I, can I say something about it or do you have any questions about it? I, my, I would like to understand, feel like nobody's working on the development agreement yet, coming to me.
Well, there's still a lot of things we gotta work out. The biggest thing that's going on with the land was in the city. So, um, there's some things that we will discuss at our next E D A meeting, uh, moving forward that, that I think need to be brought up that, but yeah, we're still working on that. But we gotta get this, because the, the city can, as you said, the city cannot, you know, give you any, basically, we'd have to sell you the land for cost.
Yeah.
And I'd give all it, really.
Right, which I understand. But I did hear things like it's not gonna be next month, it might not even be the next month, till some of these development agreements and plans and, um, looking into all this is gonna occur. I mean, I just wanna make sure that what I heard was correct.
Right.
I don't wanna compete with this.
We have some patience because this is, you know, we're gonna have to negotiate with you too, what, what you're gonna want. You know, I know you've got your things and we'll come back and, so we'll have, what we'll do is we'll hopefully get the resolution done and then the E D A meeting, we should be able to finalize, I don't know if you can make that E D A, E D A meeting? I don't know. That would be helpful.
Yeah, which day is that, is that on?
The Monday, what, twenty, twenty-first, twenty-first. So, if you can make that, that would at least help both.
Yeah, I, I would think at the very least I can get there by virtue of.
Okay.
We could have a boiler, place a development agreement and then we get the indication from the E D A on, all they're gonna fill all those three blanks as far as purchase price, tax income financing and, and utility costs.
Yeah, 'cause if we can start getting the numbers, you know, we'll wanna get that calculated tax number, um, what we can expect, what we can offer.
I mean, I don't want anybody to get it wrong, I'm not against tax income financing, I'm not. I'm not against it. I'm just, I'm just trying to look at the whole picture, yeah. But I think if we can get you to the next meeting, that would help speed things along so we're not constantly back and forth. And you, you know, then you ask questions and, you know, stay on meetings anyways.
Sure.
So, if that works for you, then hopefully we'll, we'll move as fast as we can on it. But again, there's a, there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle that gotta be put together.
Right, which I understand. We have a builder that's ready to go and he needs to plan a summer. And so, that's literally why I'm asking. So, this is gonna be a couple of months. I need to let him know it's gonna be a month and then we'll need to look at what we're gonna do. We can't stay where we are. The longer we're there, the worse it is. So, we just need to, I mean, that's why we brought it up months ago.
Right. I guess I have some patience with us and we'll get our, we'll get our work done.
I have some patience.
I know. I know, but these deals take a while. And we, we spent a lot of time on getting data mail addressed here. We spent a year on that one. So, just, we'll get this worked out. Okay. Alright, move on, um, so, basically, we got reports, the February police report, any questions on that? And then the March report, January and February people services report, I forgot to take this off. But Lee will give it in report next month. And then the statement of funds for February. Any questions on any of those? After we've gone. Okay. And then so that leaves us to item twenty, Kurt. Questions?
Okay. Very, very useful. I feel a little better about presenting this now, I have a discussion with your staff. As you know, I have been, I have been talking about council pay and I haven't even talked about council meetings. And my, my questions that I've been asking myself is that the number of council meetings needed depended on the workload of our city staff. I think that's the recommendation that was made to us as our city staff was caught up, so we didn't, we'd have two meetings a month. City of Arlington had two regular council meetings for greater than twenty years. I think it's been twenty-seven years. I don't think our workload is any later. In fact, uh, uh, we've had two administrators in the past ten to twelve years, some good and some better. I've never heard one of them say that they've been totally caught up to a point where it affected our number of council meetings. You can have the workload was caught up, it's got nothing to do with our, with our workload. Um, we can look at our projects. We got an eight and a half million dollar street project going, we're getting certification, now it's over eighteen months old. Um, we should be reviewing our, our rate structure, our water, sewer and electric rates. You're not waiting till three, four years. These are all jobs that the council can be involved in, discuss then review employee reviews. We gave employee reviews for our performance merit raises out. I guess I would have to ask our personnel committee if they've been involved in performance appraisal. Um, I think we need, another thing we need to do as a council is manage and our employees. We need to, uh, uh, discuss issues such as overtime tracking. I, I'm not comfortable, maybe you guys are, is that all of our track, all of our overtime is being really monitored tightly within our city office, within the chief's realm with his department. I'm, I'm not confident in any of that. You can say I'm trying to micromanage, I don't care what you say. I call it managing our city and we are elected to manage our city. Uh, we need a very thorough review of our capital plan. We've been dipping into our capital plan worse than kids dip into the piggy bank. Um, we've, uh, we've become, I, I work in quite a few cities, in Cibley County, in DeKalb County. That remains, I used to, because I'm trying to retire. But, uh, we've been known as the city that contracts everything out. They wonder what our employees do because we contract everything out. And just in the time that I didn't sit in, know it in the, in the audience in the past, uh, eight to nine months and the contracts that we let all on different things that I think are city employees. Council's duties are to serve the people, which means timely meetings to respond to staff, consultants, state or citizens and people that want to build within our community. Maybe two meetings a month would help that, but maybe it wouldn't time enough. Payment of bills and invoices should be reviewed twice a year, not rubber stamped because we have to meet the vendor's due date. You know, we're rubber stamping bills and so they meet vendor's due date. We got a vendor bill that's, that's due on, on, uh, a certain day of month and this bill doesn't come in and doesn't make the council meeting. So, what do we do? Do we hold their bill and pay lattesies or do we rubber stamp it and write it out to them? We had two, two meetings a month, we could be, uh, going over them. Seeing, and this is a personal opinion, seems the council has empowered staff, which sometimes is considered good, but maybe the council needs to take back some control of the final operations of our city. I think it's time that we have this discussion. I don't think the city has any later workload. I don't think the city has any less projects going on than we have in the past twenty years. And how come after twenty-seven, twenty-five, twenty-seven years can we afford to go down to one meeting? I don't think our workload is based on our city staff's workload. And it seems to me that's the recommendation that was made to the council for us to reduce our city council, number of city council meetings. That's all I'll say. We don't have to discuss at night, it's not on the agenda for discussion, but I should hope to find a meeting next month. And I think this is the perfect situation, you know, we're responding to them and, and, um, I don't think, I know what you guys, but I haven't had council meetings with you guys for five weeks. I feel so disconnected as an elected official from the operation of our city that I, it's, it's crazy. Maybe, maybe you guys don't have that problem. Maybe you guys are real comfortable that everything's being run and everything is funky dory and everything is koo bai on. And then we just have different perceptions of, of management.
I look at it, we hired Glenn to run our police department. We hired Jessica to run the, literally whole city. She oversees Glenn. Um, what do you want? Do you wanna see more of the bills?
I think, uh, I think we, I think we delegated a lot to our group staff, Glenn and, and, um, I'm assuming the ambulance, fire and Jessica. Um, I just don't understand how after twenty-seven years, all of a sudden our city is just caught up and everything and we just go down to one meeting a month.
I, we're telling her and everything, Jess had the question, she contacts me, she contacts Dave. Uh, we're into, she's in, we're in constant communication, I talk with her when, you know, when, before she left on maternity leave. I talk, I, I talk with her at least once a week to see how things are going. We have a list of things that we will be doing, which will require special meetings, of course, because it is gonna take some time to go through this stuff. Uh, we did have a special meeting for E D A to go through this, try to work out that stuff. Um, this was a recommendation by Jess and, because at the meetings, we were getting done, what?
Hour.
Half hour.
Forty-five minutes.
Each meeting.
Right.
So, and now we go down to one meeting, we, we're done an hour, hour and a half. So, we're still getting the work done. And like I said, we've lost staff because of, you know, too much oversight in the past.
I, I disagree with that. And as far as delegating jobs out, we have two employees. Can't find a third, been looking. I mean, at the, you know, when, when the city of Arlington did everything, they had six to eight employees. I remember, I remember when I was in the sixties, seventies. We had six, but we also had two of them were electrical line men. We also ran our water and sewer instructions. Yes.
But with what we're doing right now with some of these, we're kind of, the recommendations that we're trying out, just to see if they work. Otherwise, we gotta hire, you know, we have the one person, one person on staff that we would have to hire is a full-time planning and zoning, which, you know, that's being evaluated and if the city administrator makes the recommendation, it's up to council to decide what's going on. Um, I don't, I'm never in favor of more oversight over our employees because we hired them to do their job. And we trust them to do their job.
So, you think that, uh, and I'll go to, I'll go to Glenn. You think that we went from four-person police force? Do you think that, uh, that four-person police force has completely reduced or substantially reduced our overtime rate? Did you answer that to me? We still have overtime rate with four officers?
Do we have overtime? Yeah, we do have overtime.
Any of you have, any idea how many it is for two weeks? And you don't have any concern about that?
If it stays in the budget.
Who supports the budget? The taxpayers support the budget.
And we make the budget.
We make the budget and say we're operating within the budget.
Right.
But our taxpayers and our rate users still have to support that budget. The budget can't keep going up. The past two years, our budget has gone up down to thirty percent.
Well, the role.
Okay, so, you go to the grocery store and our food has gone up four hundred percent. Everything is going up. Electricity goes up, fuel goes up, wages go up, everything goes up.
The last budget went up because of the street project and with really, everything else we cut down just because that, that was the big one. Um, the budget before that was eight percent to compare with cost of living increase. And that was, um, and before that, I don't, I think it was five. Budgets are gonna go up.
And the city of Arlington is still, I'm, I'm not still, is still less than anybody in the county. I'm not here to sit and argue with you guys. If you guys can honestly think and you can continue to support these kinda costs and pass them on, pass them off to our taxpayers, then more power to you. The idea is not always to increase the budget every time we wanna spend more money, sometimes you need to cut money. And I'm not, I'm not saying when you cut money and you cut services every year, but sometimes you have to have control. And I think we don't. I think the perfect example is, is we talked about overtime. How much overtime do you think our street department may have had this winter? They have fought many snowstorms. Does anybody know?
I review the checks every week, every, every pay period, so.
And you know, like every, every one of you has written up without overtime.
I can go look, I can look through every single one of them. I sign off on all the checks. I sign, I, I stand by all the bills. So, and I trust Lisa that all the bills are correct.
Oh, I'm standing on that.
Forever. And I trust our departments to keep the overtime down. Obviously, we had a big snow, a big snow year. This year, there probably wasn't hardly any, but there's gonna be overtime on a big snow year. On a regular time, there was not a lot of overtime.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with that. And it would take, it would take our city staff very little time to put an overtime report together for the council once a month. When I was in management, I did it and my boss seen it and all my employees seen it, they knew that the overtime rate was, and you call it micromanagement, but I think we're in the job of managing our taxpayers' money and, and.
That's why we do the budget.
Past few percent.
We, we did the budget, that's our budget. If you want, we can hammer that budget out again, this, this, we're gonna be doing it again this fall. So, that's probably addressed.
I've been in the budget, involved in budgets for forty-seven years, sixteen with the city of Arlington, so. Okay, I, I spoke my piece, you guys say what you want publicly and the citizens that are watching can hear it and see it. People have talked to me about it.
Okay. Well, just a few more dates, uh, you know, planning and zoning committee, April seventeenth, E D A on the twenty-first and our next city council meeting is the eighth first, or eighth fifth. Uh, the motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
One second. Jeff, please. Motion by council member Reed, and second by council member Meyer to adjourn the meeting. All fair, say aye.
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 Opposed? You sure?
Yeah, I have to agree with you. I gotta go rescue mine. That's my favorite.